Okay, I'm convening the study session of the Monterey Public Library. We start with a roll call.
Trustee Felgoth.
Present.
Trustee Joshi.
Present.
Trustee Petty. Not present. Vice Chair Thompson.
Present.
Chair Moreau.
Present. Okay, our next item on the agenda is public comment. This is for to comment on any subject not on the agenda. There'll be additional time at the end of the meeting for public comment on the agenda item itself. But this is for this is for not items not on the agenda.
Right, we encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, a secure service for use by government agencies. You will be connected live in real time to the meeting. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey. There's an approximate 10 second delay and on Comcast Channel 25, an approximate 90 second delay. If you plan to make a public comment, join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone and ensure you join in time to accommodate.
Good.
To join the meeting, use the link or phone number on the library board agenda at isearchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, please dial toll free 833-568-8864. Enter meeting ID 1609322118, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment, you may raise your Zoom hand or if you are connected by phone, dial star nine. I will call on each public speaker in order. The chair has designated a three minute limit. Chair Moreau, there are no callers.
Okay, thank you. So now we're about to start our study session, which is a discussion of the strategic priorities. We have a we have it. There was a set of strategic priorities developed for 2017 to 2019. And it is now time, since we're almost finished in 2020, to update those priorities and develop a new set of priorities for 2020, 2020, 2022. What we're calling it right now. So I'd like to start by asking the staff who are going to participate to just introduce yourselves to us and just say your name and what your work, your current work at the library is. David, let me do.
I'm David Kuhn. I'm Technology Services Specialist here at the library.
Yeah.
Mary Jane Purnine, Interim Fund Development Officer. It's a part-time seasonal position.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
I'm Kim Smith. I'm currently a librarian at the library. I used to be a library manager, but that position was eliminated during the layoffs.
Thank you. Francesca?
Yes, and I'm Francesca Administrative Assistant, providing board support, office management, and currently doing the virtual programs for the library as well as answering the information line and supporting fund development and the friends of the library, among other duties that come up.
Thank you. And Malik?
This is our.
Yeah.
Apple connection.
He is.
Sorry, got it. Got it. Okay, so the maybe the most important person of this day I want to introduce to us is our facilitator, Dr. Eileen Feinman. She was a she's a very recently retired professor of democratic culture and a renowned scholar and author. And she was the dean of the College of Arts Humanities and Social Sciences at Cal State Monterey Bay and a dear colleague of mine in those days. She has extensive experience in long-range planning, management, and strategic plan building as both faculty senate chair and dean and in another number of other roles. And we very much appreciate her volunteering her services to facilitate this retreat for us. So thank you, Eileen, in advance, and we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Well, that puts the pressure on. We'll make it. We'll make it good. So what I want to do is just lay out the ground rules for the meeting as I understand them. First of all, welcome to all of you and thank you for welcoming me to support your deliberations. I hope that I can do a good job for you. Flying in and flying out like this is always an interesting challenge. As I understand it, this is a study session for renewing the strategic priorities. So we're going to engage in some discussion. Hopefully, you had a chance to review the documents that we gave you ahead of time to try and back ourselves up with empirical evidence whenever possible. We do. We do appreciate facts in the world of libraries and universities. So the the strategic priorities document that Inga will walk us through has updated information about where those priorities are in terms of their status of completion, renewal, or her sense of priority. And that's really what a lot of what you're going to talk about in detail as we go. We won't be doing a wordsmithing project here because that would take us days and we have a little less than two hours. So we're going to try and really stay at the 20,000 foot level and review this material and get get some clarity about a way to go forward. For process, I will watch for hand raising in the Zoom. That hand raising comes up in the order that the that persons have raised their hands. So it will help us sort of keep some continuity in talking. And if everyone can stay muted unless they're talking, it will help us with, you know, the outside noise like dogs and humans and clanging coffee cups and things like that. Back, back to. Oh, our I'm I'm sorry, I'm next still laying out what we're doing for the next.
I just want to mention one thing. Bob says he he can see and hear us, but we weren't. He was not on. He said he's trying to connect. So I'm going to tell him to try calling in, I think, to see if that will work.
Yes, I've actually promoted him to a panelist, so let's see if he can.
Ah.
Can unmute himself now, so might have to do with his login.
Muting yourself if you can hear us.
I just unmuted him from my role. Did that work?
Yes, it did unmute him. But Bob, are you there? Not hearing him. Well, trying. I guess. All right, go ahead.
The next part of this process, Inga is going to take the lead and lay out the context in which we're making this deliberation and talk about some of the particulars for each area as we get into them. And then we'll look.
Welcome, Bob. Can you hear us, Bob? We can't hear you though.
Oh, no.
No.
He's not muted now.
Turn up your volume, maybe.
So we are discovering there are some it appears to be a technical issue with the 800 phone number, the 833 phone number that folks are trying to call into. So if you see the agenda, there are two numbers. One is a toll-free number and one is a 669 number that's based out of Campbell. So if whether Bob is trying to call on the phone now, okay, or members of the public, you'll need to use the 6692545252 number. So everyone's aware.
Okay, well, Bob, if you can't hear us in a little while, then maybe try calling in the Campbell number. Can you hear us now? But we can't hear you. So if you want to talk, you've got to call in, I guess.
It doesn't look like we have a mechanism for adding a chat, which would be another way for him to speak into the meeting.
That's true. Is there is there chat on here?
I don't. I don't see it.
For for this webinar session, we've disabled chats just due to public record and the way that our public meetings work. We don't want to have a separate chat function enabled.
Okay, well, maybe Bob can start calling in also to if he wants to talk. Okay, so Eileen, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
No, it's all right.
Reading things to Inga, I think you were on the turn on the.
I was. I was going to turn things over to Inga momentarily by by just saying a little bit more about this, sort of how we're going to go about this, which is that Inga is going to lay out the context for our deliberations and some of the particulars for each area. And she has also annotated the strategic priorities that you'll have in front of you. And I think we're going to share screen as she starts to do that. And then we'll try to look across those broad categories and think about what would make sense for prioritization. And what we what we determine today goes as recommendations to the board for a closer review and deliberation. So this is a study session to kind of walk our way through the issues and the topics as we present them, but then also to figure a little bit of a distillation toward the end in order to take it to the board so that the board will be able to then finalize it. And given the recording, it'll be easier for the board to come back and see, you know, what exactly did we say about that? So we really don't have to worry about the wordsmithing piece here. We have a scribe and we'll have about an hour and a half now to walk through these items. So Inga, will you start us off with context?
Sure. So back in 2016, the library board, a different library board, approved a list of five strategic priorities for 2017 to 2019. And that was to take the place of what we had done in the past was a full-blown strategic plan. But having read up on on new ways to do things, there was a recommendation that it really be able to be captured on one page. And so we came up with five strategic priorities. So these are areas of focus. And the five areas, and you see on this screen that this is the document that was adopted, are organizational excellence, which has to do with staffing and training and funding; digital strategy, which has to do with technology, both for the public and to make our services more effective for the public; learning and literacy, which is really a focus on the kinds of programming that we offer for all ages; and a welcoming community space for all, which is taken from our mission statement. And that really had to do with our facility, making our facility welcoming. And the fifth priority was having a balanced collection and enhanced information sources in all formats. So those are the resources that are available to our community. So then within those five areas, we identified staff identified projects to work on or areas to focus on. And so we called those strategic initiatives. So that's what each of those bullet points are. Now, I did go through a version of this list where I provided some narrative about where we were with each of those bullets, whether it's still on the table, it's off the table, whether it's ongoing, whether it's completed, whether it's been defunded. And so that's one document that I prepared. But then, keep in mind that this was created back in 2016 when we had more or less a full complement of library staff, somewhere around over 40 people working at the library, and we had a budget of about $3 million. So we were looking forward to what we would be doing in the next few years. If you think about where we are now, where we are now is a budget of just over $1 million. 80% of our staff are were laid off and we're down to four full-time employees. And then we have part-time. As Mary Jane said, we call them part-time seasonal, but for us, they're not seasonal, but they're part-time. So that's where we are. And so I created a document with my recommended strategic priorities for 2022. And we could look at that document and then say what we see. Review this with staff, what we see as initiatives that we want to work on now. But I think that the first question is, are these still are these five priorities still our priorities? And if so, can we rank them at all?
I just wanted to. I looked at them and it seems to me that they really do cover pretty much the whole spectrum. Some of them actually, some of the initiatives could either be in one or or the other. So for example, if you're doing some digital programming for kids, it could be either under learning and literacy, or it could be under digital strategy. If anything, there's overlap, but I don't. I'm not seeing an area that hasn't been covered. Maybe somebody else. Maybe somebody else has seen it, but I didn't.
I'm going to interrupt us for a second because the Nat, what you're sharing right now is the version that didn't have Inga's walkthrough with the status.
Yeah, there was a there was a second version of the original document that.
Yeah. So I'm not sure if you have that. I think it's in the Google Drive.
It should be.
But that would take us take us up a notch in terms of the time that we have.
All right. Yeah, this is the one that I could find. But let me take a quick look and see if I can find the other document.
Yeah, there should be two Excels in there.
I thought actually the document that you had on the screen was the one that we were probably going to build upon, but maybe I'm wrong.
Ah, I'm not sure. So there there's one that was the original document that had the status of things on there. And then this this one is Inga's new one with the new priority. So you wanted, Eileen, you wanted the one with this.
Oh, maybe we're we're all in a different place. So what I thought what I thought we were working with was two documents. One, that was Inga's set draft of library priorities. And the other, that was the MPL strategic priorities, which had just taken the existing priorities and built them into a spreadsheet to see what their status was.
Right. Yeah, and that that is, I think that is on the Google Drive.
Ah, ah, okay.
I think it replaced it replaced the original document.
Right. So what you so what Nat just opened is Inga's recommended.
Yeah.
Is that right? Okay.
That's correct. And I think the role is to build upon this document to see if there are any tweaks and then identify the status priority and approach. And I can do my best to fill in this on feedback.
Thank you. It's it's small enough. And I guess my glasses need refresh that I didn't realize that it was it was the Inga list. See if I can make my screen bigger. There we go. All right. Thank you. Facilitator is now back on board.
So we're looking at the the most recent one now, right? Is that what we want to be looking at?
Yeah, as I understand it now, what we're looking at is the version that Inga went through and made status comments and recommendations in.
No, not actually not. That's not the one we're looking at. There's another one where she took the original items and wrote down completed on some of them. So there was the three columns are actually filled in. But so we could work from either one. We could work from that one, which is the original set of priorities from 2017, 2019 filled in, or this one, which is her her take on the newest priorities. Yes, yes, this is the one. This is the original priorities.
Right.
Okay, there we go. So is it the board's pleasure to build off of this and edit this version? Since it's a we've we've already got it partially filled out? Or do we get feedback from scratch from the from the group and have Dr. Feinman facilitate us through the process? Because this is this is based on what Inga thinks, not necessarily what what you all as a library board think. There's two ways to approach our process, I think. Right, right, Eileen?
I would think so.
Yeah.
So I think the chair and the director have a conversation maybe with us about which which seems like the most efficient way to get to the next step, which is to have walked through these priorities and determine what is going to make sense to do in the current context as Inga laid it out going into the next two years.
I don't know what you think, Inga. Actually, my thought would be to go to to use the one that Inga just did and and build from there. I just want to make sure everyone had seen this one where Inga commented on where the library was in the in the things that were on there. Some of them have already been accomplished, so we wouldn't even need to.
Right.
Put that on.
Yeah, so I would.
Makes sense in the pandemic. And so and and new ones have come to become what much more important because of where we are now. So probably in the interest of time. So Inga, what do you think?
I would suggest let's look at the one that's labeled 2020, 2022. But then if there was anything that somebody wanted to bring over from the previous document or ask about from the previous document, they would be welcome to do so.
Okay, so so Nat, go back to where you were. Thanks.
You got it.
All right, so Eileen, is it? Do you want to hand it over to you? Have me walk people through these.
I think it would be great for you to walk folks through this because it came a little bit later. Looks like Bob is raising his hand, but I don't know if it's for you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So you want that one? Not the one where she had where Inga has comments about ongoing or remove and all that? You want this one that looks basically blank?
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
So so the two, the difference between the two is that the earlier one that got posted to share had the strategic priorities as they stand and thoughts about what a next steps would be. Inga then took that and moved to a new level of commentary and guidance for the group about what it is that is happening now and needs to happen or may need to be put aside in relationship to. In relationship to each of the same priorities, so this is a more, as I understand it, from Inga, this is a more distilled version. That will be most productive to walk through, so you've done some of the initial, I mean, what we asked you to do. And then what you've done here in a second stage is the initial work of sort of vetting through. What's already been done, what can or cannot be done in the current budget context, and then how do you. Move forward thinking about priorities over these two years.
And I think the previous one that documented was really for your, for your. Your pleasure to read through to see what the status was before we move forward, so that was kind of a. Her letting you know what the status was, and so it's background material for this one. That's why.
So Nat, is there a way you can make this print slightly larger?
I can, or I can, what I can do is zoom in, if that's helpful.
There we go. That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we'll just, we'll see less of this, the sheet and just go one by one.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so we're, so shall we roll?
I don't know if anybody else wanted to comment on, on the categories, I said something, but I'm certainly not speaking for the whole board. If anybody else wants to comment on the five categories and see if they should be revised. I didn't, I didn't mean to speak for everybody, so. If everybody's okay with them, then you can move on.
I'm not seeing any hands up. I'm gonna, just for everyone's reminder information. I can't see everyone's physical screen while we're screen sharing, so I'm gonna count on you doing the hand raise. Which you can do in the. Screen and on the bottom, you should see under participants where you can raise your hand to participate. Is everyone clear about that? I think I don't have that because I'm one of the co-hosts.
I don't see any hand raised.
It's on the bottom of the participant list, if you click on participants, maybe?
Oh, I have to, I have to open up all the participant list?
No, no.
Oh, there we go, okay, okay, usually there's a little green hand and I don't see that.
Okay, yeah, it's formatted a little bit differently than I'm familiar with too, so I'll be. For that, and that will actually capture folks as they raise their hands, so that will help us keep track of everyone in conversation. So Marsha, you want, you were asking folks if there was any other sense about the broad categories and their relevance, is that right? I'm not seeing anybody jump into that, so we must be okay with the broad categories and. Let's, let's move into the one by one and see where we're at in terms of the thinking around each of these areas. Okay, I wonder, I wonder if it would be helpful to see the. Collective of area one, like to zoom it back out just enough so that we can see everything that's under the staffing. Yeah, that way we have the context for each one at least. So Inga, do you want to walk us through what you're thinking in terms of this area one staffing operations and funding?
Sure, so, well, previously we had recruitment as one of the priorities. Here we have staffing reorganization. Because, because of the pandemic and because of the layoffs. Because of our economic situation and because we've done some work in learning about what our community really wants. This is an opportunity and a necessity that we look at our staffing and decide what's the best staffing model. What positions do we need going forward? So that's staffing reorganization, and my thinking was that I would draft. A model with what I know, consult with my staff. And make recommendations to the board, once the board approves staffing reorg. Then that takes into consideration the budget, community priorities, technology efficiencies that we want to introduce. What we see from our comparison cities, then we'd be ready to share that with city manager. And then eventually it goes to city council. So that's a staffing reorg. Fund development, I did get some very good feedback from Mary Jane, and I'm afraid I haven't been able to reword this statement. But essentially, fund development is implements the plan that you approved at your September meeting. And what's not specifically laid out in there is, of course, the continued work. With the friends and foundation in our fundraising objectives. And what I added after talking with staff this morning is, I think this belongs here instead of where I put it before. LSTA funding and other grants funding should be pursued under fund development. With regard to promotion, that's our PR and. One of our managers who is now gone had been working on a plan for library promotion. Now, since we have a different cast of characters, I think we need to look at who we have. Mary Jane's initials should be on there as well, and figure out the best way to do a. PR plan, a promotion plan. With the, with the people that are involved, and if you could also add OO, that's for Orchidia Olvera. And she is just returning as an on-call and before she did our Instagram account, so we hope that we'll be able to loop her into some of that as well. Explore use of volunteers, that's part of our staffing plan, but we should call it out because. We've been so heavily dependent on volunteers right now, I think we, we need to think about how to use them moving forward. And then cross-training, I believe we had training in the previous document. We still need to think about backing each other up, especially when we're so few staff members. How do we back each other up when people take vacation or suddenly aren't available to work? And then what about succession planning? We shouldn't lose sight of that, although that's not the top priority right now. And finally, explore strategies for revenue generation. This is a little different than fund development, this is a category that both Jim and Harish would recognize. In that we don't want to lose sight of possibilities where we might introduce services. That can generate revenue for the library and the city, such as a passport program. Such as improvements to our little library store, that sort of thing.
Thank you, Inga, Bob, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment that the. I, I believe the, the purpose of today's meeting from when Marsha first called it. Was, it was referred to as a priority setting session. And I'm reading from my notes from that communication of Marsha's, we to. We are to reexamine priorities in light of closure for longer term and the fiscal situation. And, you know, I'm, I'm almost a little reluctant to start from any. List that we have already or anybody has already compiled because of the. Very different nature of our environment right now, both financially and in terms of opening the building and. Services that we can be offered, I think, I'll just comment and then shut up for a while, but I think, you know, the broad five, is it five? Yeah, five categories. As Marsha said, it takes into account practically everything, regardless of which, which box you put each individual thing in. And I, I think, you know, the, the idea is to. Pick out of here, it's kind of like going to the smorgasbord and all the foods there and you pick out which ones you want the most. And put them on your plate, and I think we got practically everything here. I think we need to pick out of here which ones we not just want the most, but are. Most likely to be feasible, given the new environment that we're in, and, you know, and go from there. So that, that's just sort of the frame of reference I'm bringing to today's session.
Marsha?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I, I would respond that all of these things, for example, under item one, we need to do no matter what. I mean, we are going to need to, to cross-train people no matter what. We are going to need to use volunteers no matter what, we're going to need the fund development plan no matter what. So, I mean, these are things that have a particular urgency in light of the fiscal situation that we're in, and, and I think. Bobby, you're right, the devil is in the details, in the sense of how we do these things, you know, with our budget constraints and everything, but. These are all things that I think we need to do. In, in, in any case. So it's not exactly the same list as it was before, clearly, because some of the, some of the items. Aren't relevant anymore, but I think these items are pretty fundamental to no matter what we do, we have to do these things. That's just the way I see it.
So I think it might be helpful to remember how Inga framed this, which is that. She distilled what had been under this category and each of the categories. Against the current context and the kinds of adaptations that need to happen now. Or that she's recommending need to happen now in order to keep the library functional. So there's a, you know, there's the sort of the urgency of. In the next two years, the budget is probably going to look this way, and we're going to need to pivot around. The more aspirational priorities to how do we keep functional over this time? And then be ready to be nimble again, once the budget changes to move to a next level, so if it's. You know, part of what we, what we are hoping to do inside of each of these categories is then walk through and see. You know, what is, what is the status of any of these given things? And what is the priority level for it? And then how might we do next steps? So really fleshing it out in the same way that the sort of background document did, to think in terms of what's, what's feasible. And what's urgent? So if that helps put context on it, then maybe we can walk back into the conversation about whether these. These targets underneath staffing operations and funding are effective for you to carry forward to the board. What do folks think? Got Jim?
Yes, I, I'm comfortable with them, I think it's a, it's a good list, and one that's not on here that I wanted to mention. It's implicit, but I, it may be worth making it more explicit. Is the safety, the public health safety of our customers and of our staff. That's clearly, you know, in my mind, the highest priority of any of these. But, and again, it's, it's basically implicit, but given our current pandemic, I think it may be worth mentioning.
Do folks want to put that in? As, again, all of this is recommendation going forward. Jennifer?
Yeah, that particular point seems like it would fit nicely in for the community space. Under the prepare facility for reopening, I think it's kind of implicit that we're in that area to do it safely. And I just wanted to comment, thank you very much, Inga, it makes it so much more useful. To have gone through and weeded out what's still feasible in the latest document have. It's, it's really helping me put this more in context. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think Nat is moving that down into category four. And then we'll come back into the number one area again. So thinking in terms of the number one area, do you want to try to prioritize amongst those? Or do they all seem equally critical? We can walk through each one and talk about, you know, talk about what it would, what the status is of it and what it would take to. Bring it to the top of the priority list. Bob?
Well, I think Marsha is right on when she says that there are a number of things, not just in category one, but on this whole list, but. Especially in category one that are just essential, they're fundamental, they, they are. Absolutely required, and I'm not even sure. I mean, it's like saying you gotta have a library building with a door that you can lock at night, I mean, that, you, you know. It, it's, it's just absolutely required, and I'm not even sure if it should be. On a list of priorities, if it's something that you gotta have no matter what. To me, setting priorities is, well, once you got the basics, like you got a building, you got a minimal staff, et cetera. What are you going to try to do given your resources? You know, what programs, what services, what equipment, what hours you're going to be open, things like that. And so I see these things as Marsha, I gathered, and I agree, these are just essential, there's no way we're gonna. Be successful at all unless we attend to everything that's in category one. So I see that as kind of a given foundation for then looking at what our priorities would be. In these other four areas.
Do people agree with that as a model for going forward?
Seems reasonable to me.
I will add that in our planning discussion around this, one of the things we talked about, which this then really lends itself to, is that. Some of the work that needs to happen around fun, the fundraising side is to really demonstrate the library's mission. Being enacted through really, really agile adaptation to the current situation. And understanding sort of that the library can function, can function and function. Moderately well, given the constraints, but would be ready to pivot and open more widely and is building. Yet more capacity by things like cross-training and being able to, to reorganize the staffing. So that's efficient, that you then become able to make certain kinds of arguments to the city. About increasing your funding by your efficacy and efficiency. Marsha?
Yeah, I see the, the staffing, the staffing plan ultimately. Looking at, you know, when we, when we really dig down into it, looking at things like. What do we need to reopen the library, when COVID goes away and the door can open and patrons are going to come in? What, what kind of services can we deliver for what amount of money, I mean, I think that's what the ultimate thing will look like. If we had all the people back we had before, then we could do just what we did before, but that's not going to happen. So if we only have four people, what kind of services can we deliver and who should they be? If we had six people, this is what it would cost, this is what we can deliver, this is what we can't deliver. If we had, you know, this technology and these people, what could we do? And so I, I would envision it looking, you know, kind of looking like a model, and then. There won't be any surprises, if the city says, well, this is all we can afford, then we'll say, well, that's, you know, step number three. This is what we can provide for that amount of money, so some, some sort of, some sort of piece like that. So that when we're ready to open, there won't be any unpleasant surprises where people come in and say, hey, wait a minute, I had to wait four hours for my book. Or, you know, there's nobody there to help me. So, so it's going to take a lot of work to drill down. I think into each one of these things, in particularly the staffing reorganization plan, it's going to take a lot of planning. So this, in some sense, is just an overview of the work to be done. But, but some of the pieces like cross-training, we absolutely have to do, and we've had this conversation with the city manager as well. If something happens to David, God forbid, you know, somebody has to be able to pick up the work. And we can't just say we're dead in the water because the only person who knew how to do this decided to take another job or whatever, so. You know, I, I, I think. This, this is only the beginning of the work, the work is not, we're not going to do the work today. But we're just laying out the overall plan of the work that's going to have to be done. In order to get the library back to where it was, I mean, to, to open, open doors.
I would say that in terms of priority, I feel that we took a really hard look. At revenue generation and what other libraries were offering. And I think at this point, I would consider it a lower priority, we don't want to lose sight of it. And we would certainly want to, you know, jump if we found something that was really going to help. But at this point, I would. But at this point, I would, I would see it as a lower priority, just something we need to keep on our radar screen. But I see some of those other things like a reorg plan, a higher priority at this point.
So let me ask you a question about organizing this area. If if we're in agreement that revenue generation is a lower priority and we look at this list, we know that that staff reorganization and cross training are fairly equivalent as priorities, right? I mean, they kind of, they cross talk with each other, cross training, cross talks with staff reorganization. You've got to be able to think about both together. And those seem to be the most urgent priorities, both in terms of the current status and once the doors open. Does that make sense to folks?
I think fund development has to be up there.
Yeah.
Right now as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Figuring out how to frame the library's mission for fundraising.
And we are currently in the midst of a campaign. And we just launched the MC Gives portion of the campaign today and have raised over $14,000 with that arm of the campaign.
That's
So we don't want to lose that momentum.
No. And then, I mean, does does following under the staff reorg and cross training and the fund development, which can run, you know, those are simultaneous. None of those cancel each other out. But exploring the use of volunteers, do you need to have that be second to the staff reorganization in terms of not that you're going to say no volunteers till we figure out our staff, but really promoting and figuring out sort of tasks for those folks? Does that fall next or simultaneous?
I I actually see it as part of our staff reorg. I mean, we right now are depending very heavily on a group of volunteers. We wouldn't be able to provide sidewalk service if we weren't using volunteers. So it's sort of part of the staffing reorg plan is how do we use volunteers in a sustainable way?
I think that's true. And I think similarly, the the piece that says promotion, which is the last thing hanging out there, you kind of need that for fund development. I mean, you can speak to that, but I think if you, if you don't, if you don't sort of promote yourself, that you you can't raise money.
That's right.
They're kind of together too.
And that that PR plan really does go with fund development. They're they're sort of A and B to one another.
It's also an important part of any programming that we do and services that we offer. However, because some people don't know that we provide a sidewalk service right now. And or they haven't heard that we're doing programming, even though we've had some some pretty big attendance at our programs. So we have to make sure that as we plan programs, which is further down on the list, we have the PR piece in place as well.
So looking at the list under number one now, does it look like it makes sense to folks? Bob, I see your hand up. You're you're muted.
Eileen, you stopping on my behalf here?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was actually going to close this, but if you want to comment on it, then
Well, I was just going to say that there, you know, there will be a positive correlation between what we can do and the staff and financial support that we can get from the city. And presumably, those latter qualities will increase over time and we'll get more funding, we'll get more staff. That means we'll be able to do more stuff, whether it's programming or buying books or whatever it turns out to be. And I would like for us to say, well, what can we do now? What are our priorities, given our resources now, such as the sidewalk service? That will be continued, not something where we'll turn off the switch as soon as we get another $100,000 or as soon as we can open the front door or something. But something that we can start now that'll continue. And one example that we've discussed before today is the use and development of the virtual programs. And I think things like the Zoom that we're using right now are gonna gonna become a part of every library's repertoire of services and programs. And I think we should start things now that we can continue, maybe expand, you know, not keep at the same level. But things that we're starting now and that will not only be good while the building's closed and the pandemic is making everybody sick, but that we can continue even after the library's open. Because I don't think any of us are going to think, are thinking that we'll go back to the full full number of staffing that we've had in the past, even when we get to reopen the building. That's going to be reduced. And so I'd like to see that what we plan in the short term will be a springboard or a beginning level for what we continue in the long term, rather than something that we start and then stop just because we, you know, got permission to hire three or four more people. And like the virtual program would be one, the Bookmobile would be one. And things like that, that we could start at one level and then continue later on.
I think, I think that's true. I think all of the things, item one are in that category. As we go down further, we could look at each one with that lens. And I think you're absolutely right, we should do that, we should look at it wrong with that lens. But I think that we probably shouldn't dig deeper into item one, because we'll spend the whole time on item one and then and then we'll be done. So I think we should take a pass through the whole thing, keeping that very important point in mind as we look at the rest of it. Because I think item one passes your test, everything on there passes your test. But we should, as we move on to item two through five, we should keep that in mind for everything that we look at.
So I think that's right. And as I'm listening to those comments, it's also true that some of the strategic planning around those items, like how we might use our our digital tools to expand library reach, those fall into other categories as well. So they're good, they're good to bookmark, but I think when you go back and deliberate about this in the board, you'll be able to itemize things more directly. So let's take a quick look at this area and make sure there's nothing that doesn't make sense here and that it's it's in good shape to send on to the board. I see Jim's hand up.
Yeah, just one minor suggestion. In my mind, the cross training could easily be considered part of the staffing reorganization. So I'm not sure it really needs to be a separate heading, but that's not a big deal.
Yeah, that and that's the kind of thing that you can go back into in the board meeting and synthesize areas as we've will end up clustering things, I think, in each of the categories. So that'll be a good way to clarify and then link priorities.
I like the term there clustering, as you, the themes of staffing, volunteers, cross training being one. Promotion and fund development, also another, I will say, if I could, I don't have a raised hand function on, since I'm a co-host with you and Inga. But just to tap onto what Inga said about revenue generation, I think here in the city manager's office, we'll continue to focus citywide on on what type of revenue generation strategies we can continue to utilize to provide funding to the city that can help support our our essential programs like the library. The passage of measure Y, for example, which was the 2% rate increase for hotel tax will help us tremendously in the city upwards of, from 2.4 to 5.8 million dollars per year is is a good chunk of change that will help help support our programs. And it sounds to me like in, for this exercise, fund development is different than revenue generation. But many of us feel like they're, in in one way, they are similar because it does mean more revenue to help support the library, whether that's through a rate increase in in TOT that helps the the city and which in turn helps the library or whether that's grant opportunities through the state or donations from great programs like MC Gives.
Great. So I will note for us that on number one, staffing operations and funding, we've spent close to half an hour.
Let's move on.
So we need, we both need to move on, but also need to think about how, I mean, some of these areas are smaller. But you want to be able to get through them and to, you know, and stay at the 20,000 foot level to get through each and really think think them well, but think them with with more speed to to make it through.
Okay, I'll quickly walk you through digital strategy. So implementing RFID and that would, and continue to explore automated materials handling. And that is for efficiencies and also to improve the customer experience. Enhance our customers' technology experience, improving public printing for reopening. So that's something that has been a sore spot for our customers when we're open is that it's so cumbersome to try to print and so many customers come to us because they don't have a printer, their printer's not working. So I just wanted to make sure that we kept in mind that service and how we might improve it. And offer virtual technology training. We talked about this with staff this morning, and we really want to be nimble in terms of keeping up with the kinds of training that the public wants when it comes to technology. We've offered in building technology training in the past, you know, tips and tricks for how to use Word, how to use Excel, because so many people need help with those programs when we're open. And then nobody comes to those programs. And then meanwhile, when we were closed, or now we are closed, when we started offering Zoom classes, people signed up for those Zoom classes. So we don't want to dismiss the fact that, you know, people aren't going to participate in virtual technology training if we offer it, but we do want to be strategic and we want to be nimble with what we offer. So that's why if need warrants, if we see a big need, then somebody was mentioning how many people call in and are confused about how to use the catalog. So maybe we want to do some, you know, learn, learn about how to use the catalog might be in a program we give off. Migrate library and museums websites to new content management system. So this is happening, the city is going to be moving to a different content management system or platform for the website. And this is going to be an opportunity for us as staff to do an audit of the content that we have on our website and decide, do we really need that page anymore? Do we really want to have a link to this or that anymore? So it's sort of going to happen anyway. And once it happens, it's going to take a bunch of staff time. So it's an exciting opportunity. I want to make sure that it was on there because it will take staff time. And then this is probably not something we'll start tomorrow, of course, but we know that having materials from our California History Room available online has been a priority for a long time. And in a time like we're in now, where people can't come to the California History Room, it would be so wonderful if we had more of our content available online. And the sad thing is, is we have a lot of it digitized already, but it's not available. And so a project would be, you know, what do we need to do to get it up and available? And I think that probably has to do with cataloging, but that's the kind of thing we might do with a grant. So those were the things that staff and I came up with for our technology work.
Thank you. So are they, well, the the migrate library and museum website seems like that's going to be, have an outside driver. Right? You can't decide that that's a priority or not a priority, you're just going to have to do it when it's time to do it. The the first one is something that you already have going on, except for the the last piece of improved public printing, which seems like that's that's not happening until reopening, right? So does that, does that recede as a priority or is that still really important to be focused on right away?
I think it recedes as a priority, but I'm reminded now that another staff member mentioned, oh, under enhance our customers' technology experience, what about providing a computer lab before we're officially completely open? Or what about circulating laptops or Chromebooks before we're open? So we don't want to lose track of how can we address our customers' technology needs even while we're closed.
And so maybe you want to add something that says, explore avenues for addressing customers' needs during the pandemic. I don't know, I don't think that anybody is, I I don't know, maybe Nat can help us with that. But I don't think that there is any place, if somebody wants to use a computer somewhere in Monterey and doesn't have one and is homeless or something, I don't know that there is any place now that people can go.
So I know that some libraries are planning to open up access to computers. I believe that Carmel is working on that. And the county library is working on it and had mentioned that Seaside will be one of the locations where they'll try to have a few computers available that can be scheduled in advance for people to come in and use. And then, of course, as we learn that information and talk to other libraries about what they're doing, we also want to ask ourselves, oh, is that need then going to be met? And we should focus on something else? Or are people here in Monterey, who can't go to Seaside, going to have that need? And we should try to address it here? So those are the sorts of things we'll need to think about.
So do do these line up in any kind of priority order to your minds? It seems like some are, some are driving themselves, some are, you know, do we want to turn and focus on this? And some need deeper exploration about how great the need is or how current the need is, either one. Thoughts?
I would say that even though there's an external driver for migrating our content to a new content management system, we do keep, continue need to think about how is our webpage laid out right now? And is it laid out in a way that's, you know, easiest for people to find out what services are available right now? So we're kind of doing some of that anyway, and so it seems like that needs to be happening.
Bob?
With regard to this, I mean, it 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 sounds like a great idea for people who don't have Wi-Fi or computers to be able to come to somewhere that is provided free of charge to the public. But I'm looking at the one section of the feasibility study surveys that's in that collection of documents that we have for today's meeting. And in the list of the things when respondents were asked to indicate, what do they like about the library? Computers and Internet was way down in 13th place. And then asked, well, what would you like to have improved in the library? You know, things like more programs and increasing the collection and so forth. Anything to do with computers and technology was all the way down in 10th place. So I'm I'm not sure this should be a high priority. I'm not saying take it off the list. But in in terms of meeting the needs and desires of the greatest number of people first, I'm not sure this should be a high priority. And I'm using these two pieces of data as just, you know, something that would support that idea, maybe.
Yeah, I just want to respond that I, maybe it was in the feasibility study, but I know that the questionnaire that we sent out during the pandemic was sent out electronically. And so people who don't have computers couldn't ask for computers because they didn't have computers. So we should just keep that in mind.
These these responses were in-person responses.
Oh, okay.
Not online responses to the feasibility study.
Oh, okay, thanks. Yeah, it's hard to prioritize this this group, I think. Because, you know, some of the things are just happening, like the RFID. This is the time to do it, not necessarily because we need it, but because the library's closed and it's a good time to do it. Because the library's closed and so it's going to be up there, but it it may not be the most important thing we have to do. But so maybe, maybe we should come back to this one. Just see if there's any more things that go on the list and then maybe try in the context of the rest of them to prioritize this.
If you look at it in terms of the kind of clustering effect we did last time, the RFID work and the RFID work and the migration of the websites are both like circumstantially driven and have to happen, right? And then the other pieces are more nuanced responses to public interest and demand. And those you might, you might be able as the board to sit down with a, with a more, a more rich description of the feedback you got in the surveys and think about really what are we hearing? And then in terms of Inga's sort of daily experience, you know, what are people saying? Hey, where's my blah, blah, blah? You know, how come I can't get access to such and such? And that will, that would give you more, more granular information. But most, most of, I'm saying leave it, yeah, I think you can move the RFID and the migration next to each other as these are happening priorities, top of the list. And then the, you know, exploring the needs and building out the California History Room seem like second. And I, and I would just add as a sort of an asterisk on the building out the California History Room that that might be a really fine thing to connect with CSUMB about and see if there are students in the California History classes who might take on a project with you. Because that's, if you have a lot of it digitized, then they can certainly help with digitizing some of the material into an organized form. So that, so enough, you know, back up with exploring volunteers and thinking about those kind of partnerships. I think that would be, that'd be an interesting reach out. And Inga can make those, those connections for you at a later date.
Thank you.
So are we good with number two?
I did want to make sure that David and Kim didn't want to chime in about anything because since so much of your work has to do with digital stuff.
I also think there's an overlap between two and three. So that some of the stuff that I keep thinking of, I think is probably in three about other digital things to do.
Yes.
Virtual programming.
Okay. So hearing no further comments, we'll go on to learning and literacy. Okay, so we put virtual programs on there, continuing to provide them for all ages. And so far, when we first closed, we were doing a lot with children and teens. And then when we lost our staff, we were doing things, we've been doing things with adults. They've been very successful. And now we're going to be bringing back some part-time folks with some donated funds to work on children and teens programming. So that's exciting. We want to eventually relaunch the Bookmobile program as health restrictions and funding permits. And we don't want to forget about a small electric vehicle to use for outreach. And then the third point is sort of the big generic one of offering programs for all ages that inform, inspire, celebrate, honor, enrich past, et cetera. So we want to make sure that we're still offering programs that meet those objectives, whether they are virtual or in person as we reopen. And something that Francesca pointed out this morning when staff were talking is that some programs might actually lend themselves to both. So that some folks participate virtually or while some folks participate in person once we are able to reopen and have gatherings again.
So I'd offer up to you that the last one, offering programs for all ages, seems like the objective of your learning and literacy programs overall.
Yes.
To that is how you do things by satellite with the Bookmobile or on, you know, virtually now and ongoing and in person.
So it's sort of the umbrella.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Yeah.
And then to speak to Bob's point, the very first one that says provide virtual programs during closure, we may end up keeping those virtual programs because some people just don't want to go, come to the library or they prefer virtual programs. So we can, we can still say during closure, but to keep in mind that it may not just be for during closure. It may be for developed during closure and used for all time.
And there also tend to be, as I'm watching these kinds of programs in Santa Cruz County, you increase your audience by having things online as well. And that can be really advantageous, both for general PR for the library, but also for fundraising capacity. So Jennifer?
Yeah, it comes to mind that by offering virtual programs or hybrid programs, you get around so many of the limitations currently existent because of the size of the community room, which is pretty cramped. Also, I'm one, if there isn't a possibility on some of the programs, if you're able to capture that through video recording, where you could even launch like a library YouTube channel and offer trainings, programmings and have an archive that you could draw upon over a period of time. So that would allow you to go ahead and extend these kinds of services despite funding cutbacks and lack of staff. It kind of gives you a leg up.
Yes. And in fact, when we did our children's virtual programs, we actually pre-recorded them and we had them release, like every Tuesday, there'll be a new story time. But what we were hearing from families was it was harder for them to attend at a set time on a set date. So they actually appreciated that the video was then on our website and actually our YouTube channel, I guess, so that they could watch it as it worked with their schedule.
That's great.
And then I should say that we have the Canary Road Days, a project that just ended. And Francesca loaded a lot of those programs onto our YouTube channel. And people have been watching from all over the country, from Alaska to Hawaii to Ohio to Michigan. So that's exciting as well.
So as you look at this section, is there a reorganization that seems to need to happen? Or does it seem fine in terms of its sequencing as priority set?
Well, I kind of liked what you said, Eileen, maybe to take the program for all ages as a sort of umbrella and put that at the top, not necessarily because it's a higher priority, but because it's sort of, sort of drips down to the other ones. I think we want to keep the, keep everything there. We don't want to fold it into that. But I think maybe at the top, it just kind of frames the discussion for the other ones.
So having done that, you then have the providing virtual programs during closure. And third, relaunching the Bookmobile. That seems like a natural progression in terms of what you can do COVID-wise. Does that make sense? I see Bob's hand up.
Yeah, I was actually going to comment in that regard. That paragraph where it talks about programs for all ages, was that just added today? That wasn't in the document that was sent to us before the meeting. Is that right?
Right. That's, that's, I had a meeting with staff this morning and
because see, I'm, I'm looking at what I downloaded from before and it wasn't there. So I just wanted to make sure.
It is being pasted from the original.
Yeah. In the, in the sense of being open to all and have programs for everybody. You know, and we're talking about, well, not everybody has this or that capability to do things and what can we do for them? You know, both the virtual programming and the Bookmobile provide programs and services to people who have difficulty or just flat out can't get to the library. And I, I, I think, you know, whoever was, I think it was Eileen maybe was saying that, you know, you're going to increase your customer base by having things available to people that don't require that they actually physically come to the library building. And as what Inga was implying about the availability of programs, I mean, it's like Netflix. Maybe there's a new show on Netflix and a new episode comes out every Monday. But after that Monday, it stays there. And if you miss it Monday, you can watch it a week from Monday or Tuesday or something. And I think we could both have a schedule and this will be available for the next five months or something like that, that, you know, people can go back. Or they could do a binge of four programs that have been on for four Mondays in a row and they've missed them all and they want to do it all at once on a rainy day. So that, and the Bookmobile is another example of something that allows us to provide to people that either don't want to or have a hard time getting to the library proper. And with regard to the, looking at smaller electric vehicles, I have a tiny bit of information about a brand new Ford product that is similar to the transit vehicles that, for example, the PG Museum uses that, that are gasoline powered, but they're coming out with a new electric one. And in my mind, I have to get more information, but that would be even better than the ones that Inga and I have been talking about in the past, that are the small vehicles, similar to what the city's gardeners use, except, you know, with an enclosure. And so an electric vehicle that of that nature would be, you know, fantastic. It would allow us to do a lot more and a lot more outreach. And just one more thing that's not actually on this list, but in terms of doing something now that we can continue to offer in the future and will want to, I've already been contacted by a family, two parents and two children. They use the library a lot. They've come to programs, they use the books. And they have told me that, boy, when the library reopens, that'll be great. But I sure hope you still have the sidewalk service. They're saying that is, you know, such a good thing. Let's, can you figure out a way? In fact, he said, when's your next board meeting? And I said, well, guess what? It's this Thursday, sort of. And he said, well, tell them that that is such a great service that try to continue that even after the library is reopened. So I'm just throwing that out there as a little example of something that we've already started. And let's keep it on our mind that maybe we can continue in some, to some degree, even in the long, long term.
Okay, so I'm going to pull us back up to the 20,000 foot level and take a look at this category one more time and see, does it make sense the way it's laid out? Learning and literacy programs. And are we ready to move it to the board? Are we good? I see no hands up. So let's take a look at number four, a welcoming community space for all relative to the facility.
Yes. So I think that the maintain safe library operations in COVID environment for the safety of the public and also for the safety of the staff, that kind of goes nicely with preparing the facility for reopening. Because as we look at how we're going to reopen, we need to maintain the standards that we're currently following now. And then we have continued to address homelessness issues. And that was on our previous list of priorities with some, some more detail associated with it. We were doing staff, staff training around homelessness. And we were working closely with the police department and a service that they have that, I can't think of the name of it right now, but we were attending monthly meetings with them to sort of find out more about what the police were doing in partnerships with other agencies. We've looked at, should we have, should we invite CSUMB perhaps to have social worker interns in the building once a week to help provide information about services? There are just a lot of things around homelessness. So continuing to address homelessness issues is kind of an umbrella for a lot of stuff that we need to look at. And one of the things that people probably noticed when they were looking at our surveys is there's a lot of customer concern around visiting the library and homeless presence in the library. So that is something that we need to acknowledge that there's that customer concern and then figure out the best ways to address it. And then we don't want to lose track of, oh yeah, we want to change the layout of the Library Help Desk. That's our main desk so that when we reopen, we are more efficient in how we staff it. And then finally explore prioritization of the library renovation with other city facility projects. That's sort of where we left our facility feasibility study, was that we presented it to council and council directed staff to figure out how this is going to fit in with the other facility improvements that are needed. So we just don't want to lose sight of that. And that's it for four.
So the, do those categories seem like they're all critical and in priority order?
I would say that the changing the layout for staffing efficiencies is higher than the homelessness issues because that's something that has to happen while we're closed.
Okay. David, I see your hand up.
I was just going to say that too, that being able to reopen the library and have the desk actually work would be a higher priority than the next level of service.
Yeah. And it, it really should be next to prepare facility for reopening because that's kind of part of preparing the facility for reopening.
So now they've been moved that way because Nat works fast over there. So collect order. I think it's Bob.
Yeah, I, I, I think preparing the facility for reopening is more than stacking the shelves and wiping off the chairs. I think preparing it for reopening has to include our concern for the homelessness issues. And a number of people over the years have talked about, well, I have one family that has contacted me and they said, I just won't come because I don't feel safe. And I won't bring my kids and let them, you know, go about the inside because they don't feel safe. And I think that is part of preparing the facility for reopening, not just physically preparing it, like making it clean and disinfected.
I'm, I'm sort of the outsider to the conversation, but it seemed to me that the, the category of preparing the facility for reopening is a broad category that encompasses all manner of things. And I would suggest to you that having the category of continuing to address homelessness issues definitely is its own entity, has its own shaping concerns, both for safety and for comfort of patrons and for accessibility for the homeless as appropriate. So it seems like those are two separate things and preparing the facility for reopening is a much larger umbrella. Is that, is that true for those of you that crafted that language?
I would say that maintaining a safe library operations, et cetera, could fall under preparing the facility for reopening as would the changing the library help desk layout.
Yeah, there, there's
Those are of a piece.
Yeah. And they're sort of discrete things, whereas the homelessness issue continue to sums it up pretty well because that's an ongoing issue. Goes to, you know, the help desk laid out and moved and that's done. This, the, the addressing homelessness issues is not going to be done for a long time.
And probably exacerbated by the deleterious effects of COVID on the economy. So that's an ongoing thing. So the tasks to get the facility ready for reopening, Nat just reorganized them as, as a set. And the continue to address homelessness piece, I think, still stands as a separate item.
Yeah, the help desk.
Will you change that back, Nat?
Yeah.
There you go. It's like having, having someone else sitting with you using the remote. Trying to keep track, but thank you, Nat. You're doing great keeping up with us. So does this category look like it's ready to go to the board? My cat thinks so. She's weighing in underneath me here. That's my headphones. My cat thinks so. She's weighing in underneath me here. That's my headphones. Um.
Anything else?
I would say
All right.
The uh library desk and all that, that really doesn't need to go to the board. That's something that the library staff, that's their choice how to do it. It's not something the board needs to weigh in on, in my opinion.
Right, yeah, we're just going to weigh in on the whole plan. We're not going to tell them how to do it.
Oh, okay.
So it's just really for tracking that these are the things that are, that are the um intended tasks underneath the category. So are we good?
And maybe we have to help them find money to do it, but we don't tell them how to do it.
Right.
All right, good.
So are we good with this category as it stands? So we've taken about 15 minutes on every item except item one, which was uh long and involved and touched each of these categories as well. So that tells you a lot about the, the way that these priorities lay out for the library. So our, our last category, um the balanced collection and enhanced information sources in all formats. Inga.
Okay, so um use donated funds to purchase popular materials for all ages. So we are um currently fundraising and we have an Amazon wishlist um linked on our website. My sense there is, of course, we use typically, we use donated funds to balance our collection, but right now really prioritizing using any gift funds for collections to purchase popular things so that um donors can see impact right away. You know, we have 60 people waiting for a bestseller, New York Times bestseller with somebody's gift. Now we have 50 people waiting or 40 people waiting or that sort of thing. Um then explore and implement cataloging and processing services. That is a carryover from before, but it seems like it's all the more important now, which is can some of the work that staff have been doing in building to process the items that we purchase be done prior to our receipt of those items so that we pay a little more when we buy something, but we save on the staff time that it would take to process those things. So so that's always a difficult thing to do when you have staff in place. When you don't have staff in place, it's a little easier to look at how you might um form that out to a vendor. And then the third one is an important one, which is we're currently in conversation with other public libraries in our MOBAC consortium about sharing our catalogs. Right now Monterey and Pacific Grove share a catalog, but we're talking to Carmel, to Salinas and some other libraries about expanding the shared catalog to include them. And that would not only expand the collection that's available to our customers, but there might be some opportunities where we might be able to use their staffing expertise in one area and then meanwhile, we have expertise in another area. For instance, nobody has a David. Um, and right now we don't have anybody in charge of acquisitions. So could there be some down the road, some swapping or sharing of staff? So that's what we have under number five. One of the things that I'd had earlier and I took off was reading the collection for RFID. That's really just an aspect of RFID project. It's an important thing that has to be done, but it's sort of subsumed under RFID and that is we don't want to tag things that we've decided we don't need in the collection anymore.
So how are we in this category? Marcia?
Um, a couple things. First of all, the one about explore and implement catalog and processing services. Uh, have you already decided that that's uh financially effective or is it just explore the efficacy of doing that? I, I, I'm not sure. Are you sure that you want to do it or you, you don't?
Well, we want to find out um what vendors have to offer and what the cost would be and then we'll decide.
Yeah, maybe explore and possibly implement or something because you, maybe you're going to decide it's too expensive. So I'm not sure. The, the other, the other piece, I'm not quite sure what to do with this, but um I don't know that we're going to end up, it, it almost reads as if it says that any books we're going to buy, we're going to buy with donated funds and we're not going to have any more money in our budget for for materials. So um I liked your idea as, you know, use donated funds to purchase materials so that potential donors, you know, can see that that's happening. But I, I'm not sure that I see down the road that every book you ever buy, we're going to have a zeroed out budget for materials.
Right, and I don't want to imply that. So I think it's
So that, that's why I think, I think what you want to say is, is you may want to add a bullet that says keep the collection up to date. Because as you pointed out, Inga, to me, you know, people say, I want the latest James Patterson book. So you always know that when you get the, you know, when James Patterson writes a new book, 50 people are going to sign up to want that book. And if you never buy it, then people are going to stop using your library or going to start dissing your library because you don't have the latest books that they want.
Mm hmm.
Somehow you have to explore ways and then maybe you want to put it that way, explore ways of keeping the collection current. And that may be donated funds, but it may be, you know, at some point when the city restores someone absolutely essential because our users in the survey said the most important thing to them is the collection. And they don't want to read, you know, they, they're, they, they read the New York Times bestseller list and they say, these are the books we want to read. And they expect them to be in the library or want them to be in the library. So
Maybe it's something like spend donated funds on greatest impact or something like that. It's sort of like we want to use the funds that are donated to show impact to our donors, show benefit to our donors.
I just think they're two different things. One is to, you know, to, to show the benefit and use the wish lists and donated funds. But I think it's also in a generic thing that says explore ways to keep the collection current. And if that is channeling some of the resources from the library or, or doing something else, I don't know. But I just think it's really important to put that in there.
So I've got three people anxious to get in the mix here.
Good.
Jennifer and then Bob and then David.
Yes, I'm wondering if you want to do a little wordsmithing to indicate what you really mean is using donated funds to supplement uh the materials budget. That way the city doesn't go, woohoo, we never have to buy another item for the library. Again, they're going to go out and hold a bake sale every time they want to buy a book or whatever, uh which I don't think is what we want to do. I mean, right now, that's where we are. But at some point, it would be nice to get back to normalcy and be able to use the funding to purchase special things or supplement what we, what a baseline collection should be. And that's my two cents. Thank you.
Every word in here has used donated funds and wish lists to supplement funding for popular materials for all ages in order to keep the collection current.
Nice synthesis. And remember, we're not going to totally wordsmith here, but that gets all of the points that just got raised. Bob?
Yeah, and Jennifer, this is at least the third time today that you've spoken before I did and used the exact word I was going to use. Um, so right on. Anyhow, I was going to say to uh supplement the purchase of, I was going to say current rather than popular materials for all ages, but you know, if you want a longer sentence, fine, but I was trying to, you know, keep it short, but throw in the supplement. Right now it's supplementing a budget of zero from the city. And if, you know, next year the budget says, hey, we got, I mean, the city says we got $50,000 for you, then the donated funds would be supplementing a $50,000 amount. But the idea is that it's supplementing what the, 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 the city provides, no matter how little that may be. And uh for the purchase of current uh materials.
Let's not wordsmith it again here now. I think we got, Nat got all the points in and then you can refine it in the board meeting. David?
Well, obviously not to want to rewrite it again, but I basically agree with Jennifer and Bob. But from a slightly different tact of which should be keep the current, keep the collection current, including the use of donated funds and wish lists. So that the focus is more on maintaining the collection rather than just saying, yeah, we're going to use donated materials.
I second that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that the top priority is to keep the collection current. And we will use donated funds to supplement the regular budget. And we want to be fully funded because the collection's important.
Yes.
And after that, you can play with it in the board meeting, but that, that, you've captured the gist of it.
One of the things that's not included um or called out specifically is digital materials. And so at this point, it sort of goes without saying that when we talk about our collection, we're talking about all the different formats um that people want from magazines and DVDs and books to online magazines and e-readers and so forth.
So it might be helpful when you refine the language in this going forward if you define collection. And then it can just stand in, in those, in those categories.
Maybe we should just put a note that says collection includes digital, et cetera, something, just something in there.
The heading says all formats, but then
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Is there a term, Inga, for collections that aren't digital? Is it paper, I guess?
It's hard copy.
Hard copy.
Or physical. Sometimes we say physical.
Old fashioned.
The chisel and granite. Okay, so in this category, do these things look like they're in the priority order that you want to send to the board? That seems like a quiet yes. Okay, well, we've walked
Inga, that between the second and third one, are they right?
Oh, I don't see them anymore.
Okay. Yeah, the last one. Very end. Yeah. The, the uh cataloging services and then the MOBAC.
Yeah.
Okay. In order?
Correct, yes.
We good? Okay. Well, you've walked through the strategic priorities and the list of tasks ahead. So Marcia, I'm going to turn it over to you for next steps.
Well, this is, this is really wonderful. I think the next thing we need to do, um unless anybody has any more comments on what we've just done, I think this is probably a good time to ask to hear from the public, to ask for public comment. Let's take a minute.
Jim Thompson is waving for a comment.
Jim?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted, I appreciated getting some comments from David. Um, and I just wanted to take a minute before we go out to the public to ask the other staff if they have anything they'd like to add that they haven't had a chance to articulate so far. Mary Jane or Kim or Francesca?
Um, uh, with the caveat that I am totally on board in not with, in not wordsmithing, I'm uncomfortable with the way that that last item that was discussed was left. Um, it begins with an emphasis on um the use of donated funds and it doesn't, uh, I just hope that by the time this is passed along to the board that the um meaning that um David and others presented uh that that be reconstructed because it's misleading as it is right now.
I think it got recrafted while we talked. Is that right?
No, a footnote was added or a, a comment to the right, but it still begins with um a focus on donated funds.
Oh, you're right.
Oh, yeah.
I just, sorry, I know we aren't wordsmithing, but I was just, that was kind of a
No, I think that's important because we did decide to, that, that keep the collection
Keep collection current was the top driver.
You're absolutely right.
So Nat, will you just change that and then the wordsmithing will continue?
Yes.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We missed that.
Okay, Marcia, to you.
Okay, oh, before we turn it over to the public, I want to thank um Eileen for uh leading us through that exercising and exercise and herding the cats and uh for spending a couple hours of her time and she doesn't even live in Monterey County. So she's a cruise, so.
But you can't tell because it's virtual.
That's right, that's right. You could be in Bulgaria, right? But uh anyway, we much appreciate it and I think that uh maybe we couldn't have done it without you because uh we would have got bogged down somewhere, I'm sure. Okay.
You seemed very organized and I was happy to do it with you.
No, thank you. Thank you. So let's take, let's just take a minute for public comment and then we'll talk about the next step.
We encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, a secure service for use by government agencies. You will be connected live in real time to the meeting. To make a public comment, raise your hand using Zoom. Or to join by phone, please dial 669-254-5252. Enter meeting ID number 1609322118 followed by the pound sign. And again, that phone number is 669-254-5252. The meeting ID number is 1609322118. There are no callers, turn around.
Okay, uh, so I just wanted to mention the next steps because this is a study session. We don't vote or approve or anything like that. This is the, the result of the study session, go to the next board meeting. And then we uh, we open it up for discussion and that's the place at which we would um, we would vote on it to approve it or amend it or whatever we want and then before it becomes the work plan. So um, that's, that's what will happen. It will go on to the December meeting for discussion and and then we can open it up and wordsmith and do all those other things. Um, so now I just want to open it up to comments from anybody here. Bob?
Uh, I would just request that even before the uh regular agenda packet comes out for our next board meeting, since Nat has already typed in all of the changes and reordering and everything, if um a document showing that uh change to the original one we received, uh what, yesterday or day before could be sent to us, you know, more like ASAP. Um, and not wait until the rest of whatever documents are in the regular agenda packet go out.
I think that's a great idea. Maybe you could just put it back, you could, Inga, uh, Matt could send it to Inga and can just put it back on the Google Drive. So it'll just be, it'll be there for everything.
Yeah, just take what Matt created from all the changes and the reordering and stuff and put it there. So we have that sooner rather than
Yeah. Good suggestion, trustee Petty, and uh what we've done, I've actually edited the document live in Google Drive, which you all have access to. So open the same folder, you'll be able to
Right there.
There already. Great. Thank you.
You mean I can't find any extra work for you?
You, you can always find extra work for me, Bob.
Okay, does, does anybody else have any uh, any comments or closing words? Inga, Ben, Bunny? We're good?
Well, I definitely want to thank Eileen for um leading us through this process. Um, it's just amazing that we were able to have your expertise. And I'm really pleased to have had our staff and trustees all together for this. I think it's um, you know, we haven't done it this way before, but I think it's been very valuable. So thank you all for this experiment. I think it's worked very well.
I think it's great. And of course, once it's uh, once we approve it, that's when the real work begins, right? Because the devil is in the details, but it, it gives us a nice roadmap from which to, from which to work. So I think it's, it's wonderful.
Yep.
Okay.
And big thanks to Inga for organizing it and then distilling it and reorganizing it in a way that made it so viable to walk through this afternoon. I don't, I actually don't feel like I did anything.
Well, and thanks to Nat. So Nat is amazing at multitasking, um contributing and tracking our comments. So thanks to Nat too.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you very much. Very much appreciated.
Great team.
Yes, yes. Any, any closing remarks, anything, any? Well, I think we're done right on schedule.
Wow.
So.
Bob has something.
Oh, I just wanted to say, have a great Thanksgiving holiday before we meet again.
That's right. Okay, and we are.